I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everybody. Before we get to the approval of the meeting agenda, there is a need to amend it. So we'll need to add salary schedules after athletic supplements under high-performing workforce. And we need to add an Envirothon field trip to Dublin, Georgia on the consent agenda. If there's no questions, I'll make a recommendation to approve.
Do you have a motion to amend tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Mr. Calhoun, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Pritchett, all going forward?
All four.
Okay, next up, we have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Jeremy Green from the LJ Church of Christ is going to do our invocation for us. Thank you, Mr. Green.
First off, I was invited to pray over a school board meeting. This is a block party. I've never seen so many people at a meeting, but it's great that everybody's taking the time to be here. Preachers like to tell a story, so I want to tell you a really, really quick story about my great-grandfather. His name was Solly. Solly was short for his full name, which was King Solomon Green. And unfortunately, he died at a very young age, long before my father was a twinkle in my granddad's eye. But that's always been a cool family story, that my great-grandfather was named King Solomon. His namesake in the Bible, in 1 Kings, Chapter 3, has the opportunity to ask God for one thing. You can imagine what somebody might ask God for: wealth, or power, or influence. But he asked God for one simple thing, and that's wisdom. And God was pleased with that and granted it to him. And so now, today, if you do a quick Google search of the top 10 kings in the history of the world, right there is the wisest king that ever lived, King Solomon. And in James, Chapter 1, which is one of my favorite books of the Bible because of its practical nature, James says this, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all, without finding fault, and it will be given to you." Now, I'm not saying that you guys lack wisdom. But certainly, when we come together to think about the future of our community and its education, one thing that we ought to always pray for is wisdom. And so tonight, with that in mind, let's go before God. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity to gather. We thank you for our community in Gilmer County, and for the citizens that make it up, for our school system, for our superintendent and our board, and for our educators who are here tonight, for so many students who have packed the walls of this room to be here tonight. We're thankful for the recognition they'll receive and for their desire to excel. But Lord, above all tonight, as we get ready to close out this school year, and as we strive to be pleasing to you, we ask for wisdom, for wisdom for the decisions made, for wisdom for the future that is before all these students and educators. And we just ask that you grant it to us, and your word says that you will. Lord, be with us tonight. Bless these proceedings, and help us to give you glory in everything that we do. And it's through your son's mighty name that we pray. Amen.
You would please stand with me and join the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen. All right, next up, we have a ton of recognitions tonight. So, Lottie, are you going to get us started?
Good evening. We are so excited to recognize so many students and some teachers tonight. And we're going to start off with the Young Georgia Authors Competition. And if the principals will come up here to join me. The purpose of the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition is to encourage students to develop enthusiasm for and expertise in their writing, to provide a context to celebrate their writing successes, and to recognize student achievement in arts and academics. Now, we have students at the Elementary and Middle School that competed in the Young Georgia Authors. And how you advance in the Young Georgia Authors is a tiered approach. You have to win to the grade level in your school, and then you go on to the district. And then, if you win in the district level, you go on to the RISA competition. And if you win at the RISA level, which we go to the North Georgia RISA, then you compete at the state. And so tonight, we are going to recognize our district winners by grade level. And one of our district winners received an honorable mention in the RISA competition. And three of our district winners are also North Georgia RISA winners, and they will advance to the state competition. So we're very excited about that. And so at this time, I'm going to call the principals forward. Let's start with... With Mr. Walker. Okay, if you want to call...
It is always exciting to recognize and honor our students. And especially as we progress, we're at the level of... Kindergarten district winner, Emma, North Georgia RISA winner, kindergarten, Cece Martin. Cece. And second grade district winner, Noah Parretta.
LJ Elementary is proud to recognize an outstanding young lady. The first grade district winner is Ms. Ella Sanford.
And Clear Creek Middle School is also excited to announce our winners. We have, in third grade, we have Hesakai Richard. Hesakai was a grade level winner for third grade for the district. So come on up to Hesakai. And I'm going to save fourth grade for last. So our fifth grade winner was Amelia Ferguson. She was also a grade level winner for the district. Was Amelia here? Okay, and this special young man, he was not only the grade level winner, he was also the North Georgia RISA winner. So for fourth grade, this award goes to Elliot Smith.
Hi, for Clear Creek Middle School. We are excited to recognize our eighth grade level winner, Mr. Roland Adamraby. Our seventh grade level winner, Ms. Braylon Whitley. And in sixth grade, not only a grade level winner, but also honorable mentions at North Georgia RISA, Ms. Lisette Garcia Garcia.
All right, Gilmer High School had three outstanding ladies win awards. Samantha Whitley was our 10th grade winner. Our 11th grade winner was Jacqueline Gonzalez Santos. And we had a North Georgia RISA winner also as our 12th grade, and that was Elizabeth Warren.
Okay, our next recognition is for Laws of Life essay, and Ms. Liz Smith. I think it's here. She's a teacher at GHS, and she's going to come and present these next.
So the Laws of Life essay contest is kind of connected to the Rotary Club locally, but it's also a state contest. So we had some winners and some honorable mentions. So I'll start with our grade level winners. For 12th grade, it was David Raphael Garcia. And another grade level winner was Harrison Chester. I'm going to save our winner for last. I'm going to call out our honorable mentions, which are Riley Powell, Dulce Maris, Elizabeth Shup, and Elizabeth Warren. And our grade level and school winner for the Laws of Life essay contest was Esther Bowman.
Okay, next, I'm going to call Mr. Greg Lithrow, who is also a teacher at GHS, to present the Daughters of American Revolution essay.
Every year, the Social Studies Department works with the Daughters of American Revolution here locally in the James Kell, Captain James Kell, chapter. We sponsor a essay-writing contest, and it's usually about some figure in American revolutionary history that strikes them as important. This year's winner is Marcy Ann Barrera. The Social Studies Department also sponsors a contest for a $500 scholarship. This is called the Good Citizen Scholarship, and it's really backed by the Daughters of American Revolution. We just, in the Social Studies Department, try to find the best candidate. We view several resumes throughout based on the recommendations of the Social Studies teachers. This year's recipient of that scholarship, she had to write an impromptu essay that was proctored without any idea of what the topic was going to be. She is Olivia Shul.
Okay, next, I want to bring up Ms. Darcy Pritchett and Ms. Allison Sees, and they're going to talk about the MACCON.
We are super excited. The MAC team at CCMS has competed in MACCON for several years. It's a national competition. So our students are competing completely without regard to socioeconomics, how big the school is, whether they're private or public schools. And we had this year 74 kids who ranked at the outstanding level. But we have seven who ranked in the 80th percentile or higher nationally, which puts them not only in a league of their own, but also opens up some scholarships for them. And that's the reason that we do MACCON. They can be up to a $25,000 scholarship just for being really good at MAC. This is not an easy competition. They will tell you, they look at it and go, "What is this asking me for?" So we are super, super proud to recognize these seven. I'm going to start with our eighth graders. Is Mr. Elmore here? Ben Elmore, is he here? I didn't see him come in. He was our overall top pick for our school. He ranked in the 88th percentile with a score of 215. It's the highest score we've ever had. So I wish he was here. Our next ranking is Ms. Anaya Henderson. She scored a 208, putting her in the 84th percentile. And the next one I have is Ms. Braylon Alasko Chun at 205, the 81st percentile. And in the 80th percentile with 203, Mr. Aiden McCart. And I do want to mention, this is tens of thousands of kids that these kids were competing against. And Ms. Sees, I'm going to turn it over to you to do our... All right, so I'm going to do the seventh and eighth, or sixth graders, excuse me. So first, we've got Nilsa Wisquena. She got 203, scoring in the 82nd percentile. We have Raymond Ewing. He scored a 202, putting him in the 81st percentile. All right, we have Ms. Kenzie Farmer. She scored 211, putting her in the 85th percentile. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we have two more recognitions. And now, I'm going to call Coach Glanton. And his coaching staff. And we are very excited to recognize these students.
All right, guys, I'm Coach Glanton. This is Coach Tappia. He's our community coach. We are very fortunate to have him. This year's CCMS middle school soccer team went 7-1 overall, won the Mountain League Championship. We scored during the regular season, I think it was 25 goals for, three against. So at this time, when I call you up, guys, if you would get your certificate, stand up here for a picture. First off, Saul Cruz. Ronald Kousse. Zane Davis. Marvin Felipe, I don't believe Marvin's here. We've got George Garcia. Christian Perez. Christian Joel Perez, I don't think he's here tonight. We've got William Ramirez, our captain. Iker Rangel. Fidel Velasquez. I don't think he's here either. Our seventh graders, Jonathan Bardolone, I don't think he's here. Our keeper, one of our keepers, Henry Batista. Pedro Batista. Our co-captain, David Lopez. Mayner Lucas. Jacob Pantoja, who's not here tonight. Jason Perez, he's also not here. Another one of our keepers, one of our go-to guys, Shane Perrigo. Leandro Ramirez. Gabriel Venoso. Post-Sway Sierra, I don't think he's here tonight. Our sixth graders, Christian Blakely, I don't think he's here. Eric Chavez. Elvis Ortiz. And Bogart Tedders.
This hand is a little bit... Or may I have some extra bros?
Like the pull-over?
Yeah. You got one?
Oh, yeah. Mine's a little tight right now. Everything's tight around here. How are you doing? Thomas, good night, nice to meet you.
Okay, this is why...
Okay, at this time, I'm going to bring up Rob McCart. We're going to recognize...
Okay, so this year, we did our second annual Excellence in Educational Technology Award. This award is given out to teachers who submit a lesson plan that shows excellence in educational technology. The winner receives a $1,000 grant, and then subsequent winners receive a $500 grant for use for classroom supplies. This year, we had several submissions, and we ended up with seven winners. Our grand prize winner was DJ Underwood from Gilmer High School. He could not be here with us tonight, but he wanted me to pass along his word to the board, his thank you to you and Dr. Ridley for opening up this competition. He expressed just how grateful he was to have that opportunity, and how he appreciates that an emphasis is put on technology due to its importance for our students' futures. The rest of our winners all came from Clear Creek Middle School, and they all received a $500 grant. I believe we have one or two of them here this night. We have Holly Kenzie. Tabby Payne. Amy Becker, who could not be here. Shannon Goble. Mayala Juarez. Lori Moles. And Pam Scruggs. Besides their certificates, each winner of this gets a challenge coin. It's a nice medal that says excellence, and then it has symbols of educational technology. And on the back, it says Bobcat Technology.
Well, congratulations to all of our students who've been recognized, and our teachers as well. We're very proud of... Oh, we're not through?
I have one more thing.
Oh, really? Okay.
You know, a lot of times, we recognize our students and our teachers and different ones. But tonight, I want to recognize Dr. Ridley.
Oh.
He recently was at the Georgia Schools Superintendent's Association, and he received the President's Award. This prestigious honor is awarded to superintendents for outstanding leadership in their school system and community, and was presented to Dr. Ridley at the String Boot Trap Conference in Savannah last week. And we're really proud of Dr. Ridley. He was nominated by North Georgia RISA Executive Director, Dr. Steve Miletto. And I just wanted, I just wanted to recognize Dr. Ridley for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much. But again, it's my honor, but really, it's the result of all of our work, all of our parents, teachers, students, staff members. We've done a lot in a short period of time, and I'm very proud of everything we've accomplished. So, now I can move on, right? Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So if you're not interested in that, you're not required to stay. But you are more than welcome. Yep, would you give it to Lottie? The blond-haired lady there? Hey, how you doing? Well, we'll take, we'll take care of it. It's important to have it right. So we'll take care of it. No, all y'all do, thank you. Have a good weekend. I'll take it under my breath. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the March 11th, 2024 work session, the March 14th, 2024 regular session, and March 15th, 2024 board retreat minutes. We also have fundraising requests and the Envirothon field trip to Dublin that we had added earlier. If y'all have no questions or concerns about that, I'll make a recommendation to approve on Thursday. Under academic achievement, first up, we have Jessica, who is going to come up and tell us a little bit about the ultimate achievement standards. Ms. Chastain?
All right, good afternoon. So the state has implemented a diploma option for our students that participate in what they call the Alternate Content Standards. And that is a Georgia Department of Education curriculum that's approved for students that have the most significant cognitive disabilities. And this diploma is earned by completing the course study requirements set forth by the Georgia Department of Education, and also includes participating in the Georgia Alternate Assessment. So whereas most of the time, the conversations that we have are about end-of-grade, or EOG, or EOC in the course assessments, students with the most significant cognitive disability participate in the Georgia Alternate Assessment. And so tonight, I'm just presenting to you what the diploma will state, and it will be a course of study diploma. And it will not include the word satisfactorily, since currently, that word on our diploma represents the credits that are required by the Georgia Department of Education if you're not participating in the Alternate Content Standards. So you guys can look at the two diplomas there. And it just is the difference in the word that represents the credits set forth for students without significant cognitive disabilities, and the course of study diploma for students that will be graduated. and the course of study diploma for students that will be graduating with the course of study program.
Do y'all have any questions about that? The course of study is prescribed by the state, so this is really mainly a procedural vote that I have to do on Thursday, because you can't, you can't give away diplomas that you have not approved, so.
I mean, do we have to fall into that category?
Well, it depends. If the district, you know, you have everything from elementary, you don't really start making those, those decisions till about nine years old or older. But at the high school, like towards this particular school year, we would have to. But it all just depends on the grade level and where they are in the season.
And the state's target for the service of students with severe cognitive disabilities is one percent. We generally operate...
Right under one percent, usually about point eight, or, you know, something along, along those lines.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I'll make a recommendation on Thursday to approve. Under parent and community engagement, the first thing we have up is really more of an informational item. It's literacy night. Just a reminder that it is on April twenty-sixth. We have flyers. It's your invitation, board members. You are welcome to join us for, uh, with all sorts of fun. Just reading takes us places, and go all over the world, so I'm assuming their theme will be very multicultural. It'll be fun. We invite everybody, the public, to come out and participate and enjoy a little reading fun. Next up, we have the Kids Cottage Board, and under that, Kids Cottage is an organization that supports a facility, I think it's out on Yukon Road. James, is that correct? And it's a facility that supports the needs of foster families. And our, their commission requires a board of eighteen members, which will consist of five ex-officio members and thirteen community members, and it requires about five different people from the school beyond it. I'm one of those, the superintendent, but it also requires a board member. So on Thursday, Mr. Parks will be able to take nominations from y'all, and y'all will need to select a member to serve on that board. How often do they meet, James? Do you know?
They meet at least once a month, and generally, it's on a Tuesday.
Okay.
Because we, there's a lot of, a lot of folks that have been involved with children, but they think that's part of that board.
Okay. Do y'all, if y'all have any questions, I'm not as familiar with this organization as I should be, because I think they've sort of been out of commission for, during COVID. James can answer any questions you may have. He knows all about it. He's the one that brought me this. So, on Thursday, y'all can take a vote and appoint a member. All right, moving on to operational factors, you have the personnel report for your review. We can discuss it in the executive session. If there are no questions, I will make a motion that we, or make a recommendation to approve on Thursday. Next up, you have the athletic supplements. Those are provided for your approval. They include, we had discussed previously, a not, approximately nine thousand dollar increase, and they have made another adjustment in there that brought it to eleven-five in total funds. If there are no questions, I'll make a recommendation to approve on Thursday. Do y'all have any questions about that?
Dr. Ridley, has there been any committee that put this information together, or how was all this decided upon?
Well, we only made some slight adjustments to kind of bring a couple of ones that we thought we might have maybe funded enough. Other than that, we haven't made any significant changes.
Have we looked at where we're at to surrounding?
From what we, from what we can tell, we're pretty competitive. You know, one district has higher supplements and gives more days. Here, our supplements tend to be a little higher than other places. We don't do as many days, but we do combinations of, of things. Okay, so we added to the agenda the FY twenty-five salary schedules. And as we discussed in our retreat, the salary schedules you have in front of you include twenty-five hundred dollars to certified staff, plus a three percent increase for classified, with a one percent increase for school nutrition, since we just upped their pay a couple of months ago. Felt that would be in recognition of that. And it's a pretty good-sized document. You guys can discuss it now, or we can use it as a discussion item on Thursday, but do y'all have any thoughts about this?
So, this doesn't include a one percent, any supplement increase for certified?
Not yet. Not yet.
All it includes for, for that is the twenty-five hundred, uh, state?
That's all we changed on it, was the governor's recommended raises. I do have the information that Mr. Glue will reference, so we can discuss that in the executive session about how much that'll cost. Okay. On the maintenance update, Mr. Griffith is at his, every, every few months, they're gonna have an overlapping city council meeting, so he's not here for that, but he can answer any information or question you may need on Thursday. We've received natural gas bids. We received four bids. Fireside natural gas came in with the lowest bid at twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. Documentation is provided for you. Tom can answer any questions you may have on Thursday, but if there are none, I'll make a recommendation to approve them. Flooring bids, we're still, uh, opening, I don't think we opened those till tomorrow, but I put them on the agenda just to let you know that I will send you out that information. We can use it as a discussion item on Thursday, and if it be the pleasure of the board, we will approve. Next up, we have our transportation update.
Good evening. So, this month, we had, actually last month, we had a lot of usage on our diesel because we did a lot more just regular field trips, because it's towards the end of the year, so we are getting into our field trip time for all grades. The gas usage this year, I mean, this past month, was sixteen hundred and ninety. Diesel was twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-three, and the field trip mileage was two hundred and four, two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. I'm sorry, and the athletic was three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Do you guys have any questions?
While you're up there, we've got bus purchase approvals on here.
Right.
And that's the four that we discussed at the retreat.
Correct.
Three of them will be purchased out of East Bloss, and one will be purchased as a bond bus.
Correct.
Do, do board members have any questions regarding that while Sam's standing there?
And three of them should be here at the end of May, probably after school's out.
That's soon? That's pretty good.
Are they replacing, like, doing away with?
So what we do is we, we rotate them out.
Yeah.
We always fit our field trip drivers with the newer buses, because they go out of town, and we want them to be safe, and our fleets look nice when they're out. So we will just rotate the, their buses down to one of the other routes, and then the older buses, we will take off.
We don't wanna have to go tow them home.
Right.
But we don't have, we're, we're down to pretty close in the last meeting. I mean, we don't have any really old ones anymore.
Um, our oldest bus right now are, are O-nines.
How many of those do we have, do you know?
We have five.
And then what does it jump up to the next year, like fourteen?
Elevens.
Eleven?
We have one eleven left. Wade got rid of one eleven two cycles ago, because they had engine problems, and we were a little long in there too. All these buses are diesel, we're going back to. Diesel, yeah, yes. We only bought two gas bu- buses in twenty-twenty. I think it was because they actually had them there, and we didn't purchase the buses.
You probably couldn't get diesel.
I was the one that purchased those, so I'm not sure why we had them.
And you probably couldn't get diesel in twenty-twenty.
We did get some diesel in twenty-twenty.
But I mean, there was a shortage of a lot of diesel.
Right, well, there was a shortage of buses lately, because they quit working. They shut the plants now.
Okay, any further questions for Sam?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next up, we have policies for first reading, and all we have on there is policy DFC, federal funds. Under policies for second reading, we have policy DIE, fraud prevention, policy EBBF, safety inspections, policy JBC one, homeless students. I would make a suggestion that you could move those policies for second reading, if you have no questions or concerns, to the consent agenda. We've received no public feedback that I'm aware of. Okay, y'all agree? All right, next up, we have the Noah Harris Center. I met with the Harris family a couple of weeks ago, had a great meeting with them. Told them about what our, you know, plans were of moving wrestling down to the old Larry Walker Gym, expanding that facility a little bit. There's a, there's a wrestling room next to the gym, and between that and the gym itself, you've got enough room to do all of our wrestling practices. And they, they said they did not wanna stand in the way of progress. They seemed to think it was a good idea, and I think, I think they'll be excited with what we, what we come up with, but I really enjoyed getting to sit down and meet with them. Great folks, great folks. So on Thursday, Tom will give you a little bit of an overview about what exactly our plans are, and we can make a recommendation at that point. Next up, we have the Clear Creek property. The property adjacent to the county baseball complex that was given to the county several years ago will automatically revert to our ownership under the terms of the original agreement. Commissioner Paris has asked that we sign a quitclaim deed to prevent that automatic transfer and give ownership to them in order to develop future recreational facilities. We can discuss this a little further in executive session, but I will make a recommendation on Thursday at the pleasure of the board. Do y'all have any questions concerning that? All right, up under fiscal accountability, we have Patricia Parton.
Good evening. Hope you're doing well tonight. Don't have a whole lot, just some financial numbers for you. For the month of February, we, our revenues averaged about three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and forty-five, and our expenditure, expenditures were two hundred and sixty-five, four oh three. So we were, our revenues were over the expenditures about fifty-five thousand, four hundred, fifty-five thousand, forty-two. Looked a lot better than the month of January. So, uh, we're just winding up the end of the year. Participation is still great amongst all the schools, and we're just trying to plan for next year and the summer. Do they have any questions?
Yeah, we got seamless summer coming up, don't we?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are we doing seamless summer at the high school?
Larry Walker's.
Yeah, we, we cook out of that kitchen, right?
Yes.
And we're serving there, too?
Yes, it's just, it's, uh, it's easier, uh, it's easier to get to the public. Plus, we've got, you know, all the football players, when they practice, they just come into that big cafeteria, and they just eat. Plus, it's right there at the football field. So, it'd be a Larry Walker's.
Okay. And next up, for her first budget update, Paige Hensley.
It is a pleasure to be here. And first step, we have our purchasing policy. This ensures an approval. And those are purely, I would just call to your attention, we have the EPO amount for, um, our EAC project. That's the five percent act of the proposed budget of twenty-four point six million. And that amount, we've only paid so far fifty-three thousand. Also, and the stronger connections were in it, you will notice that those are stable, um, purchase orders to ETC. They do, um, they, they aggregate over a one hundred thousand dollars, but those are in federal brands, so those are just for your information. And does anybody have any questions about anything else on that list?
Okay.
All right. Next step is our financial summary. And our local tax property collections as of February are twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy, twenty-two million, four hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that's at two point one million dollars from federal, from fiscal year twenty-three, and also at point percent. Our state sources, which is, um, our primary, our heated annual twenty-two million. Um, our total revenues were forty million. Uh, from twenty-five and then twenty-three. Our total expenditures are thirty-three million, giving us an excess of six million. And our end-of-period, uh, period fund balance is thirty-two million, one oh seven, nine oh eleven, in the general fund. Any questions?
You say thirty-two million, general?
General fund, yes. Okay, and on the next page, our special revenue plans. Our total revenues are six point seven million, and our total expenditures are six point seven million, and we have, we have a, um, we're under our revenues, just so you know, at twenty-two thousand, six seventy. Our capital projects spend, our expense revenue at this point is five million, and I will, um, draw your attention to that. We have, um, another update from, um, Raymond James, and we are projected to collect our last two, um, checks, um, in April and May, so then our East Bloss should begin, um, to press, projected on July first.
Which means we'll collect for June, too, right?
Um, questionable. It's just according to how much the checks are for April and May.
Okay.
Um, I will let you know that, um, of the total, the twenty-eight million, we have left to collect one million, forty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. So, um, and our, our March check, which we collect in April, is usually around seven hundred thousand. So I'm thinking it will probably, like I said, it's just depending on how much that check is.
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
We are still gonna be able to pick it up seamlessly, though, with the, or you're saying we can't start the, the East Bloss till June?
It's projected to start in July.
Okay.
Yes.
But there won't, there won't be a cutoff.
There won't be a lag?
It'll, it'll just keep going.
Okay. Even if we collect the last million in, in, uh, May and June? If it, if we collect over that, what'd you say was one million?
Um, right, over a million, I mean, for.
We collect over that, we're gonna get to keep that with the twenty-twenty, or is it gonna go on the new East Bloss?
It will, our East Bloss will not start till July first.
But.
But what we've, what we've been, what we've been told up till now is that if we hit our target before the end of the is that if we hit our target before the end of the quarter, that.
Then we can collect thirty-one of the quarter.
Yeah, that's what he's asking.
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then our last, but not least, our expense spend and our revenues were one hundred and seventy-three thousand, and that's primarily interest. And our expenditures and bond payments are at thirty-one million. Any questions, Sam? Next, um, our, our two thousand and fifteen East Bloss expenditures, um, not much to, not much news there. And our only change in that schedule, we did have one thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars in expenditures in the technology section. So our total project to date, twenty-two million, one forty-five, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then, and our twenty-twenty East Bloss expenditures, we have, um, for our performing arts center, we have the change from the primary is one hundred and seventeen thousand, eight twenty-nine, seventy-one. This gives us a total cost to date of one thirty-four, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents. And I do have a small breakdown of that. Um, fifty, uh, of course, I already mentioned the fifty-three thousand we paid to grow for the engineering fees. And we paid, um, ten thousand, three hundred to, for engineering, um, twelve thousand for surveying, and forty-two thousand to H and H for the shop and cannery, the site, the demo for the site preparation.
Okay.
And that, that comprised the one seventeen. So our total now is seventeen million, six eighty-six, eight forty-five, nine.
Okay.
Alright. And for the front part, this is front for me. Um, we have completed finally at last our FY twenty-three audit. Um, we have the clearance letter that's projected there for you. And the main thing that you'll wanna look at is right at the bottom where it says, "It has been determined, after review of your audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, there are no findings and or question costs. This completes our audit resolution process. Our file on this audit report is closed." Thank God. And, um, we, um, I will let you know, though, the indirect cost rate there, it asks us to submit it. Just since you're looking at it, we have submitted that. We've submitted that on March twenty. Um, and we will receive this year and have no word of distinction for the eighth year alone, so.
Of course.
We are being, well, that takes everybody. Everybody. Um, and also, um, the next is our audit report. Um, if you'll click on that and go to, like, page three, of our beautiful, beautiful audit report. Only people like me think that's beautiful. There you go. There, yeah, if you were to look just, um, where it says basis of opinions. Or basis for opinions. Okay. Um, in the audit world, there are four types of opinions that an auditor will, um, will give an audit report. And I'm quickly, I'm gonna tell you what they are. Um, unqualified means it's a clean report. Qualified means there are areas of uncertainty, not quite there, but almost. Disclaimer means it's modified. That means that either the, um, the company or the organization refused to or was not able to give enough information to form an opinion. Or you have an adverse, which means it is totally, totally, totally wrong. You misrepresented, misstated, and it is inaccurate. So thank goodness, if you will look there at the basis of opinion. It says, just write about basis of opinion, it says, can you see it also? "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities each major firm and fiduciary activities of the school district as of June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-three." And that means we have a, an unqualified opinion, a clean report. If not, that would have some really ugly language. And they were telling you that you are in totally out of the month. So we are very proud of that. It takes everybody. It takes our school keepers. It takes, um, our group, everybody, everybody following budget, everybody watching and their expenditures, watching revenue. So we couldn't do it without you.
Well, we're certainly very proud of your audit. And, uh, you did a good job, and, uh, I was trying to read something and talk at the same time, but I called, called, I don't know where that came from. But, great job.
Well, thank you so much. And it is, it is an honor. It is an honor. Thank you.
Alright, is anyone here for public participation? I don't see any public. Alright, so at this time, I would make a recommendation that we move into executive session to deliberate upon the employment of district personnel and to discuss the purchase disposal, acquisition of real estate, subject to approval, and a subsequent public vote.
I'll make a motion. Do you have a second? I'll say it. Second by Mr. Fluger, all voting for it. All for it.
The board will take no action after executive session. Thank y'all.